Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter Connor Litzenberger. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 271. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the P A Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the acquisition of a stretch of a railroad line located between 24th and 33rd Streets in the Strip District from CSX Transportation through the rail banking process. Bill Number 272. Resolution authorizing the filing of an application for federal assistance with the U.S. Department of Transportation for up to $25 million in fiscal year 2020 better utilizing investments to leverage development discretionary grants program for critical infrastructure stabilization at locations throughout Mount Washington. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 273. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments to agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to facilitate certain repairs to the cartway of 10th Street between Penn Avenue and Liberty Avenue. Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 274. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $84,000 to Robert A. Creo for arbitration services rendered in connection with the Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill Number 275. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Curtin &amp; Hefner LLP in an amount not to exceed $16,282.32 for professional legal services and expert advice regarding source of income litigation. Bill Number 276. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Gleason &amp; Associates PC in an amount not to exceed $5,535 for professional services in connection with the lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 277. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $12,317.50 to Kittleson LLC for professional services in relation to lawsuits filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 278. Resolution amending Resolution 813 of 2019 which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney PC to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all necessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total cost shall not exceed $112,500 over a period of three years for 2020, 2021, and 2022. Bill Number 279. Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Pittsburgh in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $161,250,000. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Just have a small few meeting announcement. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. All meetings will livestream on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Madam President.
Yes.
Hi, it's Deb Gross. I just joined.
Hi, oh, thank you. Welcome.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you please rise where you are at, where you are, for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next order of business is proclamations and we have one to be read into the record by, for Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 280. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh just hereby honor the contributions and achievements of its graduate and professional students and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declare April 6th through April 10th, 2020, its graduate and professional student appreciation meeting in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And I have another meeting announcement regarding the public comment. City Council is now accepting public comment via telephone. To register for public comment at Tuesday's regular or Wednesday's Standing Committee meetings, please first call the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. That's at 412-255-2138. After you have signed up, you will be given the telephone number and access code to join the meeting for public comment. Comments may still be submitted to the City Clerk's Office via their email at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov by the close of business on Mondays to be included on the City Council's official meeting records. We want to thank the public for their patience as we try to navigate through this whole new venture for us. You know, it's new to them, it's new to us. The next order of business will be the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 271. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the acquisition of a stretch of rail land located between 24th through 33rd Street in the Strip District from CSX Transportation through the rail banking process. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000. This grant will be used in conjunction with capital funds to execute contracts. In the event the city has awarded the grant, the total project cost is not to exceed $1 million. Bill Number 272. Resolution authorizing the filing of an application for federal assistance with the U.S. Department of Transportation for up to $25 million in FY 2020 better utilizing investments to leverage development discretionary grants program for critical infrastructure stabilization at locations throughout Mount Washington.
Motion to approve for a brief discussion.
Second.
There's no discussion on the introduction.
Introduction.
I'm sorry.
Unless you want to waive rule eight or do something? No?
No.
Okay, at the end of the meeting, I'll call on you, okay?
Got it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 273. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to enter into an agreement or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to facilitate certain repairs to the cartway of the 10th Street between Penn Avenue and Liberty Avenue. Bill Number 281. Resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Finance to create a pilot program that identifies publicly owned parcels for which deed restrictions shall be made and used for foster urban agriculture.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. No new papers.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 274. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $84,000 to Robert A. Creo for arbitration services rendered in connection with Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill Number 275. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Curtin &amp; Hefner in an amount not to exceed $16,282.32 for professional legal services and expert advice regarding source of income litigation. Bill Number 276. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Gleason &amp; Associates in an amount not to exceed $5,535 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 277. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the amount of $12,317.50 to Kittleson LLC for professional services in relation to lawsuits filed in Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 278. Resolution amending Resolution 813 which authorized the Mayor and Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all unnecessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total cost not to exceed $112,500 over a three-year period, 2020, 21, and 2022. Bill Number 279. Resolution to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electorial debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation refunding bonds of the city in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $161,250,000.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to waive rule eight on Bills 278 and 279.
Thank you. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? Then all in favor of the pass? Vote aye when your name is called? Do we vote aye when your name is called? I'm sorry. No, just vote aye. Just vote aye and those opposed vote no.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the bills will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda with Councilman Lavelle as the chair. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And myself, Chair of Hearings. I have none. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the committees for reports for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 268. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for April 8, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 245. Resolution providing for a non-monetary settlement in favor of Brian Campbell Esquire, full releasing the city from all claims and liability for alleged money owed to him for professional services provided to the city professional police officers, FOP members, who were named as parties to lawsuit filed in state or federal court as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 246. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $47,500 in favor of Douglas Anderson Administrator and his attorneys, releasing the city from all claims and liabilities for alleged personal injuries as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. I will move on to... Did I just have Councilman Coghill? I apologize. Coghill, I apologize. I had myself on my agenda.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 269. Report of the Committee on Public Works for April 8, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 242. Resolution granting unto Brendan Noonan their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use their own constant expense to install two slim AC condenser unit in a planter box screened with cedar fencing on the side of building at 1247 Paula Otto Street in 22nd Ward, First Council District of the City. Bill Number 243. Resolution providing for an agreement with Alfred Bernician Company for preliminary and final design services during construction and miscellaneous services for the Swine Bridge Replacement Project and providing for the payment of cost thereof not to exceed $830,572.47. Bill Number 244. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance and Director of the Department of Public Works to place a deed restriction upon Paulson Park and Reitman Park as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources which provided funds for the Paulson Park and Reitman Park redevelopment. Bill Number 250. Resolution requiring the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to create and promulgate or update existing operating procedures, permits, forms, rules, and regulations related to vehicle or transportation operations not already underway or otherwise sanctioned by existing ordinance or regulation over, above, and within, on, or under the right of way. Bill Number 256. Resolution amending Resolution Number 749 providing for an agreement allowing for compensation paid to PIMDA of the local costs associated with the East Carson Street Supplemental Improvement Project in order to authorize expenditure and appropriation of the aforementioned amount not to exceed $886,162.99.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, the bills are ready for final passage. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll? Will the clerk please call the roll?
She's... Kim, you're muted. Kim, you're muted. I mute your mic. There you go. Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 270. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management for April 8, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 247. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with populace in order to receive access to their visualization platform suite which would further the city's ability to deliver mobility services to residents. Bill Number 282. I'm sorry, that's it.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready, or hearing none, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor of the aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to motions, resolutions, and we have a will of council from Councilman O'Connor. Councilman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. If the clerk could just read the last paragraph, that's fine.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 282. Be it further resolved that this council recognizes that housing is a human right and calls for the swift institution of policies and resources that protect renters from financial ruin or loss of housing during the emergency as well as for the offering of resources to mortgage holders for similar purposes. This will of council is sponsored by Councilmember Cory O'Connor.
So, Madam President, just briefly, this came up because at other state levels they are looking at basically putting on a freeze not only during this time but then after to help renters because the back pay that individuals are going to get from not only their mortgage companies but also from landlords is going to hurt a lot of people. And we're already getting calls that, you know, some people are unfortunately not going to be able to... They're not making any money right now and they can't pay those back debts back, especially businesses. So, other states have done this and we're just encouraging our state to look into something like this. New York did it, I think, a couple of weeks ago as well, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other discussion? So, I just want to say, Councilman, I think that this is just such a very difficult time and a really difficult situation. I've heard from people saying that they can't afford... I mean, I think we all have their rent, their mortgage. And we know that some of the checks are coming in, but we know that those checks are not permanent. So, you worry about what's going to happen after all this. And I also worry about people who purchased one piece of property, like a duplex, and living in the other half, and they're the landlord and they depend on that to feed their families, because we've heard both sides. For, you know, we're not talking about the mega landlords, but landlords that have maybe one piece of property to help them and their family. So, I think it's just a really difficult situation to figure out overall. And I just want to thank you for putting this forward and hope that our state and federal officials can figure out something to help and help, you know, all parties involved. It's just a really bad time for everyone. But thank you for the report.
No, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you, Councilman. And now we move on to our meeting announcements. Council's regular and Standing Committee meetings are now being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel at 10:00 a.m. You can watch replays on the City Channel Pittsburgh at 7:00 p.m. The night of the meetings. City Council is now accepting public comment via telephone to register for public comment at Tuesday's regular meeting or Wednesday's Standing Committee's meetings. Please first call the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. After you have signed up, you will be given a telephone number and access code to join the meeting for public comment. Comments may still be submitted to the City Clerk's office via their email at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov by the close of business days on Mondays to be included in the council's official meeting record. Do we have anything from the members?
Madam President.
Councilman Burgess.
We are in a national crisis. And certainly, my thoughts and prayers are with the people of our city, our state, and our country as we overcome this adversity. I have seen real examples of love and of generosity in this time. I want to suggest that if there was ever a time for people to put aside their own personal agendas and their own personal aspirations and to humble themselves and to work together for the good of our city, this would be the time. It is, in my mind, shameful, almost sickening that there are still, inside government, small-minded, weak people, cowards really, who are afraid to stand in public. They're still engaging in activities of hate and racism. Still, in this time of national crisis, they're still trying to pursue an agenda of personal destruction because of their thirst for power and significance. Shame on them for their hateful activities, their lies, and their slanders. Shame on their enablers and protectors inside government who protected them in their ugliness, these ugly people. If there was never a time for real leaders to stand up and to be accounted, this is the time. Now, I am confident that the God I serve is still on the throne. And so, I don't fear any man. But I just find it interesting at this time, when this is a national crisis and we should be doing the best in ourselves, there are still these petty, weak cowards still spinning their webs of lie, racism, and hatred. And so, but I want them to know, and I want the city to know, that greater is he that is in me, that he is in the world, and that same God that is able and will protect us from this virus that will get us through, will protect me and my family, will protect all of us, our family. Because when you do the right thing, when you stand for righteousness, God will stand up. I'm a believer in that. I stand for that. And I will be making these statements as we move forward because I've had enough.
Thank you. Any other members? So, I would just say that I think that, Reverend, I... One of the things I've always said is, I wish we as leaders would get through the crisis first and lead through the crisis and help people through the crisis and humble ourselves and do what we can through a crisis. And all other things can wait after. Questions can wait till after. Politics can wait till after. But right now, our people are hurting. And I just hope that, and I think that I've seen a lot of examples of where people in the city are doing amazing things. I want to thank all those people. I do want to also mention that Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburger and I are working with the administration. And today, we began introducing legislation that will probably be amended as we work through this. But we realize that there's a real need for food in the City of Pittsburgh. And it didn't just start with the COVID-19 crisis. It's been going on for a long time. And so, we've been trying and talking about doing things more immediate for food and getting food, making sure that we have equal access to food across the city. And we have so many food deserts. But today, the beginning of what we've done is introduce legislation to make sure that we are going to have some type of urban farm or agriculture going on in every district in the City of Pittsburgh so that everybody in every area can have equal access to healthy foods. And I just want to thank my colleagues for working on this. And I want to thank the administration for working with us. I think this is something we could all get behind and start making sure we're pushing to make sure that during this crisis and beyond, our residents have access to healthy foods. And so, I want to thank my colleagues. Do you want to talk, Councilwoman Strasburger or Councilwoman Gross about the issues? Okay, so.
I'll just, thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for reaching out and for bringing this issue forward. You know, it's an issue I've been caring about for a long time. And so, it was wonderful to work with you on this legislation. And we look forward to having a few more pieces to complement it. So, I appreciate your leadership. And we look forward to having a few more pieces to complement it. So, I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. I appreciate you writing the legislation, but I want to say that I think that it's something that we've all been talking about. I think it's really, we're going to change a lot, I think. But, because I think mostly what we want to do is make sure that we're immediately, the people start seeing farms, you know, happening this spring and summer, and then in the fall, they have something to harvest so that we're not worried about everybody not having access. I mean, I think all these food banks, all these churches, all these nonprofits, organizations are doing a yeoman's job of getting food out to people. But the fact of the matter is, it shouldn't all rely on them. And that we have land, we have vacant land that we could be utilizing in such a positive way. So, I think that, you know, we'll see a lot more happening and I'm excited about us not just talking about it, but taking action. So, I want to thank the women, because I think, you know, and Councilman Kraus offered us a tour of his district because he has an urban farm up there. So, he offers... So, okay, and that's it for me. I just, I do want to say that I think Councilwoman Gross and I are, and next week, we are also working on a will of council for the post office. So, if any members want to work with us on that, please reach out. So, now can I have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.